Oh geez. That's a lot.
I'd like to call the village board meeting to order roll call, please.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Present.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Here.
Trustee Bukowski.
Here.
Truski Malcheski.
Here.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal is excused this evening.
It's be a hockey game.
During the meeting of the village board of the village of Ashwabanan may convene into closed session pursuant to A. Wisconsin Statute Section 1985-1E for the purpose of deliberating and negotiating a TIF development proposal for United Development for parcel VA 67A2 related to tax incremental district numbers three and five where competitive and bargaining reasons require a closed session. Also deliberating or negotiating the redevelopment of parcel VA 56-4-1 related to tax incremental district number five where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. B. Wisconsin Statute Section 1985-1C for the purpose of considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the village board has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility as it pertains to employee compensation. The village board may thereafter reconvene into open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 1985 Sub 2 to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember all the men and women stationed throughout the world. Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda. I have no changes.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Motion to accept the minutes of October 24th. Well, first of all, let's do A. The village board regular meeting October 24th.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. The joint village board and finance and personnel meeting November 7, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number seven. We have an award that we get to give out tonight. I will turn this over to Rex.
This award is going to go to trustee Ken Bukowski, who is receiving the Wisconsin Park and Recreation Association elected official award. In 2015, when the bids came in for the community facility projects, as everyone knows, they were quite a bit over budget. And we had to take a lot of things out of the facility projects to make everything work with the taxpayer-approved dollars. Ken immediately had stepped forward and volunteered to be co-chair and help lead the fundraising committee. He hit the ground running and to date has raised at least $1.2 million, Ken. I believe we're talking.
Give or take.
Give or take, a little bit. That's a lot of money. And it has put a lot of great amenities back into both the community center, the pool, and the performing arts center, as such making them premier facilities. They would have been great facilities regardless, but these were really special touches we were able to put back in with the fundraising efforts. I did a quick acceptance at the state conference in early November on behalf of Ken, and I said, basically my thought is it's one thing to go to a business and to ask them for a couple thousand dollars. That in itself is not easy to do, but when you're going to a business and asking them for $50,000 or $100,000, that's a whole different level. And Ken, you did a tremendous job at it. You busted down doors. You were able to get some great amenities back into our facilities. So, thank you very much. Much appreciated. Thanks.
Thanks. I don't want to prolong this meeting, but I do want to thank particularly Lissa Marth. I called her today and asked her if she could be here, but she's such a busy lady. She teaches tonight until 7:30. So I want to thank her. She did a lot. And a whole staff. You all, I mean, everybody just pitched in and the community. There were businesses that people told me, oh, don't go there. He or she won't give you a dime. And they turned out to be more than willing to contribute. And that made it easy. One thing I learned in the military many years ago is don't volunteer. And I missed that. I missed that lesson somewhere along the line. But it all worked itself out, and I think the people in this community who contributed deserve a lot of credit. And I want to thank them. And again, Lissa and the people who made this all possible. And Rex did a great job. Greg with the financing. Allison all the way along. Doug with the construction itself. I mean, everybody pitched in and made these three projects what they are. I think the pool is just, just to brag a little bit, not for me, but for the pool, one of the coaches who used to coach Green Bay, UWGB, he said this is the finest pool in the state of Wisconsin. And that's a great compliment to the whole community. And the performing arts center is up and running. We're getting better there. And of course, the community center speaks for itself. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. I know when I was, when you were going in and out of the office on Tuesdays, when I would be down here, when I was trustee in wards one and two, he was always in here. He was always moving around trying to figure out where he was going to go next. So you did a really good job, Ken. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Okay. Now, do we have any comments from the public? Must be limited to items not on tonight's agenda. Are there any comments from the public not on tonight's agenda? Comments not on tonight's agenda? Okay, moving forward. I have no written communications.
None received, Madam President.
Okay, we'll move on to 10. 10A, action to, oh, no, I'm sorry, the consent agenda. Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Now, action items. 11A is a public hearing for the 2018 village of Ashwabanan proposed budget. Greg, I'm going to let you take that because you worked really hard on that.
Well, thank you. We met together on November 8, I believe, to discuss the budget. And as proposed, it was approved. And so we're here today for the formal public hearing to adopt the budget. We're looking at an overall expenditure level for the general fund of $15,341,930, which is a .32% increase year-over-year. Importantly, the tax rate, when you push everything through, tax rate will remain flat for the village of Ashwabanan, our portion, at $6.12. I do have, just outside of that, I do have the final, all the final information from all the jurisdictions, and our overall tax rate. So the entire rate for the village, which includes the school district, Technical College, Brown County, and then the TIF districts, and then the state's school tax credit, we are going to be at 1965, and we were at 1985 last year. So that's the total tax rate. It's actually down 20 cents per thousand. That's the Ashwabanan School District. The West Apier School District will be at $20.58, which is a 3 cent increase from last year. So I guess I leave it for the public hearing where we're at with budget or any questions anyone might have.
I just want to say, well, this is a public hearing, so. Is there anybody there out here who would like to speak for or against the budget? I then need a motion.
Move to close the floor.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Floor is closed. 11B is a public hearing on a request by Anthony Reel for a conditional use permit to operate an indoor commercial recreation facility, virtual reality arcade facility located at 2642 Packerland Drive, Suite 1. Okay, anybody like to speak for or against this item at the public hearing? Yes, sir. Please come up and state your name and address.
Hello. Do I just push? Okay, sorry. Hello, my name is Anthony Realy, and I am operating out of that location, 2642 Packerland Drive, Suite 1. And right now, we have a video production company that we operate out of those suites. We actually have Suite 1, 2, and 4, I believe it is. And we're looking to create, to convert the Suite 1 into a virtual reality arcade. So we're planning on having several arcade units that people will be able to come in and enjoy. Right now, as I understand, we're licensed for light industrial. So we're just, we're coming in to making sure that there's no problems that we have, and we're happy to answer any questions. This is Sean Bowers. He's my business partner. So, yeah, we're happy to answer any questions and if there's any concerns people have.
Sounds like an interesting concept when I read this. Can you explain it a little bit?
Sure. So, virtual, well, if you think of a traditional arcade, you know, there's units that you would then walk up to, put in your quarters or whatever like that, and operate. Virtual reality, as it is, is you put on goggles and you have controllers that you interact with, and then you can be transported to a variety of environments. You can go into a shooting gallery, or you can go into archery, or you can go to France. So you can go, you can be transported to different worlds, and it's very immersive. It's not like 3D or a television where you're just looking at a screen. You're actually being fully immersed in the environment. You feel like you're in that location. So.
We are able to actually move around. We have about pods that are 10 by 10, four different pods.
Right. So we'll have a variety, as far as virtual reality goes, you're able to do a variety of tasks, and it's very interactive. You can, it's, instead of a traditional video game where you may be sitting or standing and just looking at a screen, you're actually actively doing the thing. So there is a health benefit to it that we're going to be trying to push. You're still playing video games, but you have to get up and move around and do active things. The arcade itself, the spaces take up more room than like a traditional stand-up arcade cabinet, so there'll be a limited amount of units that will be able to put into our arcade. But we'll have a dedicated space that you would then get into, put in your headset, your controllers, and then you can use the booth that you rented for a limited period of time. And again, if people want to continue it after that, then they can come up and renew that period of time.
So a group of people, could they come in there and rent one unit for an hour?
Sure. So you can come in by yourself, or you can come in as a group, and you know, if you rent it for an hour and you have like two or three people with you, you could then potentially swap the headset, and then the next person could come in. We will also have multiplayer games, so you can come in, let's say to you and your friend, and you can both go into the VR, but you can then be interacting together. So you'll see your avatars in virtual reality and be able to interact together. So the big sports games, there'll be, like I said, hunting or shooting games, there'll be a variety of different experiences.
So this really is the holodeck in its early form.
You could think of it that way, yes.
Yeah, the main reason that arcades are becoming popular, they're sprouting up around the country and around the world, is because of the large cost of, the headsets themselves cost anywhere from $500 to $1,000. A computer run it on costs around $2,000. And then you have to have a dedicated space so you're not running into your own computer or something like that. So most people don't have that or aren't willing to dedicate that. So by having an arcade, people can experience it, come it, enjoy it, and then go home and not have to worry about that investment themselves.
May I ask the other gentleman's name, please, for the record?
Yes, Sean Bowers.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay. Move to close the floor. I have a motion to close the floor.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, gentlemen. Sorry, I goofed up on your name there, Anthony. Okay, 11C, public hearing on resolution number R 11-3-17 regarding the vacation of a portion of Clive Street north of Comanche Avenue located in the village of Ashwabanan, Brown County, Wisconsin. Okay, anybody out there that would like to speak for or against the vacation of Clive Avenue? Okay.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11D, public hearing on ordinance number 11-2-17, amending section 500 of chapter 17, planning and zoning, article 6, development and design standards, village of Ashwabanan municipal code relating to off-street parking for retail stores and supermarkets. Anybody out there would like to speak for or against this subject?
Do we, I'm just asking a question here real quick, is, do we want any clarification from staff on this so people know what this means?
Sure. Aaron.
The proposed ordinance amendment reduces the required allotment of off-street parking spaces for basically standalone supermarkets and retail stores from five spaces per 1,000 square feet to four spaces per 1,000 square feet. What this does is it brings the village in line with both Green Bay and DePere, is what they require. It also then helps alleviate some of the, I guess, extra impervious surfaces associated with large parking lots. It also hopefully allows for additional redevelopment opportunities if these parking lots no longer need to be dedicated to spaces that 99% of the time of the year aren't used.
So it's just for retail and grocery stores?
Correct.
Doesn't consider restaurants, bars, hotels, or other businesses?
Not at this time. This is specifically to address an issue with the retail store that is hoping to facilitate some redevelopment of some property. I would like at some point in the future to take a look at our parking standards as a whole, because I do believe they may be a little over, yeah, excessive from what might be necessary.
Aaron, does that have anything to do with handicap parking?
No, it does not, sir.
Nope, nothing at all. Okay.
So we don't want to address that at this time within these changes right now with the other businesses?
What I'd like to do is just address this one right now as kind of an issue that kind of came to a head real quickly. But then over the next month or so, I'd like to review the entire parking ordinance and compare it to other similarly sized municipalities in the area.
Okay. Any more questions? Well, it's a public hearing.
Move to close the floor. Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, 11E, public hearing on a request from Nick Bedura with Sketchworks Architects, agent for Jeff Slindy Village Center LLC for final planned unit development ordinance 11-3-17 located on William Charles Court and Marvell Lane. Anybody here would like to speak for or against this project? Come on up. It's a public hearing.
Steve Schultzer with Sketchworks Architecture. I'm just here to, available to answer questions if need be.
This is the project, the Slindy project over here on William Charles Court. So. Okay.
Move to close the hearing.
We have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, 11F, resolution number R 11-4-17 appropriating the necessary funds for the 2018 budget.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2018 budget as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution R 11-4-17. Before we vote, I would just like to again thank staff. This was my first from beginning to end budget, and I requested that they try to keep the tax rate flat. And even though we borrowed, for our final borrowing for our three community projects, and they kept the tax rate flat, and I just want to thank you guys. Worked really hard on it. Okay, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. 2018 budget is adopted. Okay. 11G, action on a request by Anthony Realy for a conditional use permit to operate an indoor commercial recreation facility, virtual reality arcade located at 2642 Packerland Drive, Suite 1.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve that conditional use permit. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11H, action on resolution R 11-3-17 regarding the vacation of a portion of Clive Street north of Comanche Avenue located in the village of Ashwabanan, Brown County, Wisconsin.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve.
I have one question.
Yeah, I was just going to say before we vote on that, my question on that, when this whole thing first started, and Doug clarified that, was because we have some big pipe running under that street, correct, Doug?
Through that stretch of Clive Street, we have storm sewer, water main, and sanitary sewer that go through there. As part of, it's part of Bellin's expansion plans, they would like to build across that area. The storm sewer, we're going to be able to eliminate because that's only servicing basically the roadway itself. The sanitary sewer and water main is going to be handled in a fashion similar, if you remember a few years back when Green Bay Packaging expanded across Ridge Road, we're using the same design concept in casing the pipelines through that area, through the building, or underneath the building, if you will, as they design it. Then as part of the vacation process, all of the other utilities, WPS, cable, fiber optic, are all notified so that they're aware of the vacation, that if any relocations are needed on their part, they can work with Bellin Health in doing so. And everything has gone well to date, no issues, and hence it's before you tonight.
My question, Doug, is traffic. When you close that road and you're going to force all the traffic off of Babcock or...
Packerland or Clive?
Packerland, maybe. I mean, where's it going to come, you know, to fill that whole area and everything? Is that going to create more issues than to have it on Clive and, you know, so that it's feeding in the middle of the block like that? Or you're going to, is it going to create a log jam on Packer, on Babcock is where I'm more worried about it because of residential right there?
Currently, I don't see where it would cause an issue since Clive Street, the section of Clive Street that's being vacated is a cul-de-sac. So right now, the traffic is coming in from Babcock to Comanche and from Packerland to Comanche, and then is funneling in to the development, either turning at the driveway for Bellin or coming in off of Babcock on that long driveway, if you will, that feeds in, or it turns in at Clive right now at the cul-de-sac.
Or where's on the west side? Is there a west side entrance?
We get into the gym there.
The west side entrance is, yeah, the gym entrance, if you will, I guess I would call it. It's between the bank. I think there's the Oneida Nation Bank there, and then there's the Bellin Health facility itself.
If you put a building in between those two buildings, then you're going to have that much more clients there, if you will. Funneling it all off of Babcock, I'm just, I want to make sure we think about that so that we don't solve one problem for them and create another problem for us and the neighborhood.
Yep. Go ahead.
I'm just, I, I don't know if that's going to be our answer or not, I guess.
You're actually closing off, technically, if you would, you would have three entrances there, the Clive, the one to the west of Bellin, and then one on Babcock. So you're technically closing one off within the residential area, if you will, which people coming from Babcock would now more likely enter off of Babcock rather than coming up and going in through the middle. And if you're coming from Packerland, then you would circle in at that entrance, which actually lines up with the commercial district, with the extended stay hotel and the retail component.
But with closing one entrance, if you're going to create more traffic at the Babcock entrance, and you need to put another street light there to control the traffic, because we all know what it is like right there now at 172, you're only a block away. We've created that problem on Lombardi before when we had that sprintage road there and everything. We're going to have basically the same problem there.
There would not be a way to really put a light there because their entrance is very close.
I know.
So they would have to turn.
It's girl softball in the summertime and everything else. I mean, it's, that intersection is going to be just pain in the butt.
Are you talking about Comanche and Babcock? That intersection?
Babcock and where you're going to have the entrance to this facility, this Bellin facility.
That entryway just south of the Shell Station there?
That's the only entrance.
Well, there's off of Packerland, too. But I see what you're saying. But today, the way traffic goes, it all comes off of Babcock or...
But it's going to be entering and exiting on that one where it's not doing it right now. They're coming off of Clive, and it's all going to be down there now.
But as, I guess as part of their expansion, I do believe there is a driveway that would be going in off of Comanche. I'm not going to say at the same location as Clive, but it's going to be somewhere near that area, so.
Well, see, I haven't seen that, so I don't know. But I mean, I just want to make sure.
Correct. And the final designs haven't come through. This is, this is a concept that they've brought through to the village. The expansion of the facility itself, yes, will create some additional traffic, but in terms of the sheer volume, it isn't anything that causes concern for blocking up intersections. That didn't really raise a red flag to us at all.
Okay. Okay. Any more questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number R 11-3-17, vacation of Clive Street. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11I, action on ordinance number 11-2-17, amending section 500 of chapter 17, planning and zoning, article 6, development and design standards, village of Ashwabanan municipal code relating to off-street parking for retail stores and supermarkets. Any questions for Aaron on this?
I just, I would just like to say that I would like to see, I would have liked to see all parking standards addressed at the same time instead of piecemealing them, I guess. That's my only comment.
They'll be coming through soon.
I'm move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to approve ordinance number 11-2-17, amending section 500. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11J, action on a request from Nick Bedura with Sketchworks Architects, agent for Jeff Slindy Village Center LLC for final planned unit development ordinance 11-3-17 located on William Charles Court in Marvell Lane.
Well, we've got to watch out for this one now.
I think he's been here so many times, we kind of know this by heart. I'll move to approve the development located at William Charles Court, Marvell Lane.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the final planned unit development ordinance 11-3-17. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Good luck with it.
11K, action on resolution number R 11-1-17 regarding the vacation of a portion of William Charles Court located in the village of Ashwabanan, Brown County, Wisconsin.
That's just that cul-de-sac on the end of there. I'll move to approve that, too.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11L, action on ordinance 11-4-17, repealing and recreating section 9-1-1 for offenses against state laws.
Who?
This is simply just a continuation of the cleanup of our code due to the renumbering. There's a table that used to contain a nine with respect to chapter nine that was in front of the state law offenses. Just simply a cleanup for citation purposes to delete the nine, which is no longer necessary. So it just changes the table to delete the nine in front of the state statute.
Move to approve. That's what all these numbers are here?
That's right.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second to approve ordinance 11-4-17. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11M, action on resolution number R 11-2-17, disallowance of a claim, Mr. Jack Somerville.
This was a water main break between the main and his home? Is that what it was?
Yes, on the lateral.
On the lateral, that's right. I meant the term lateral, so.
I'll make a motion to... I'll make a motion to approve resolution R11-2-17, disallowance of claim.
Okay. Do we have a second? Second.
Just before we vote, what are we talking about money-wise? Roughly, roughly.
I want to say it was somewhere around $1,000.
So, is it, I haven't seen one of these come through in a long time. Is that...
It was a water service that ruptured between the property line and the homeowner's home. And I believe the claim was because the village, the village reaction time in terms of getting there to shut water off or assist with the leak was the nature of the claim, if I'm remembering correctly.
Oh, I see.
And hence, saying because of the reaction time, that delay in time is what caused more damage. I think I'm summarizing it.
Did you get flooded at all? Maze been flooded or anything?
I think there was some carpet damage that needed repairing.
I know where he lives. He lives right by the creek there, right?
It was in the basement.
Yeah, yeah. He lives right by you, right, Rex? Yeah.
We have a motion and a second for resolution number R11-2-17. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 11N, committee appointment to the Ethics Board.
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the committee appointment. It is Kathleen Herwalt to the Ethics Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Any items for next agenda? Will we have? We probably won't have the parking stuff done by next, because we have, our next meeting is December 19th.
Correct.
Not, because the fourth Tuesday is the 26th, so our next meeting is the 19th.
Don't have any, anything for next meeting, but it's interesting. Here we go. Again, we were in Knoxville for Thanksgiving with our daughter and her family, and lo and behold, I picked up a paper the day after, it's Saturday. Guess what issue they're dealing with?
Airbnb.
Airbnb. They just passed an ordinance, and it was, they had owner occupied with a separate category. And, you know, we wrestled with that. And just interesting is all get out. They, of course, their state statute was different than ours, but there it was.
Terry?
Yes?
Can you have Terry send out a December schedule for us? Because I've got everything a lot different than what you just said.
Okay.
Because I don't know when we're, Park Board Finance, if they're going to be going, the regular Village Board.
It's December 19th, or is there a next meeting?
Yeah, Village Board.
So far, there's no finance. I think Plan Commission is getting canceled. CDA is getting canceled. Ife for Park Board, so there probably is no schedule because there are hardly any meetings. There will definitely be Public Works and Protection next week. That will be at 5:30.
Right.
There will only be two items on that agenda that we can account for at this very moment. And Bike and Ped will be next week, and Village Board on the 19th. And I, so far, site plan doesn't have...
Because I'm on half of those committees, and you just rattled off that, yeah, they are, or no, they're not.
Assume they're not.
Finance and personnel is right before Village Board on the 19th, correct? Or...
We'll have one item.
Okay.
Fee schedule for weights and measures.[1770.33]